We're going to go ahead and get started. The ways to engage today. There is multiple paths that you can engage and participate today. Participate. Breakout room, whole group, chat feature. If you have an email or voice message you'd like to send, you can send it to sqrp@cps.edu. We're going to have a survey poll at the end. I please everyone, please fill that survey out for me. And we're going to have Ideal Board. So if you're not too familiar with Ideal Board, just put the information in the chat. But it gives you what to do. Just follow where it says, click on the green plus and hit the little plus right here to if you agree with someone's message. But I have a hard time with Ideal Board. But if you can't really get it, just put everything in the chat and we will get the information back to you. LSC in the house? Open remarks is going to be that Whitney Young Dolphin, Dr. Watanabe Day will follow by Dr. Sweeney. And then we'll have a truth and tell deeply listening by Monica Haslip. And then we'll have overview accountability resigned by the one and only Mr. Jeff Broome. And then we'll have our closing and the next step, the next phase of SQRP. So please make sure you put your name in the chat, your school, your community, and the one question in there. And if you had the opportunity to make a change on SQRP tomorrow, what would it be? At this time, we'll head at Whitney Young Dolphin.
Well, whose decision was it to put me after Ms. O'Bannon? I don't know if I could follow behind that act. Thank you so much, Ms. O'Bannon. So welcome, everyone. Ms. O'Bannon has already done a great job welcoming everyone and getting the energy up and getting everyone excited. Thank you so much for that opening. I just want to welcome everyone here. I want to thank you all for spending time with us this evening, carving out time out of your busy day to spend with us to discuss a very important topic within our district. I also want to thank Monica for being here with us to lead us through this important work. And thank you to all of our educators, our LSC members, our CAC leaders, our faith leaders, and all the other community partners who are joining us today. So I know that we all have a vested interest in ensuring that students have what they need to thrive, especially during these difficult times. So I'm really incredibly thankful for your partnership, for being engaged partners in education in the district. So let's get right to the big question. Why are we here? We are here to talk about what we can do to support and improve our schools. And most importantly, to hear directly from you about what accountability can and should look like in our district. This is the start of a very exciting year-long process where we will all work together to build a revised accountability system that can meet the needs of all stakeholders and really help to move our district forward. So I've spent personally the majority of my life as a part of the CPS family. First as a student, a CPS parent, a teacher, a principal, and a district leader. And I share all of that to say that this means I've experienced both the benefits and the shortcomings of school accountability. And I feel it's really important that we be transparent about both in these conversations. SQRP is a good tool in many ways. It includes growth as a measure of school progress, and it holds both the district and charter schools to the same high accountability standards. The tool itself has been key engaging how well our schools serve our students, and it has become a national example for measuring school accountability where we've seen other districts adopt accountability tools like ours. But we have to be honest in that what has been done with accountability tools like this sometimes has been harmful. Prior to SQRP, some struggling schools may have experienced negative consequences as a result of low-quality ratings. But the good news is this is a huge departure from our district's approach today, which is to provide the greatest level of support to those schools that need it the most. And you can see this in several different ways. You'll see this in the way that there's been expansion of our equity grants and in the continued investments that we're making in our district's opportunity schools. We also make sure that our accountability system has to provide a complete picture of school quality. That's what we want, a complete picture. Now, student assessments will continue to be a part of accountability. As school-assessed student assessments do provide us with a lot of useful information. But measuring how our children are progressing needs to be based on more than the test alone. That's why there needs to be multiple measures for determining school quality. And we'll have time to discuss and unpack that. Finally, we need to acknowledge that the consolidations from 2013 were informed, at least in part, by data gathered using school accountability tools. And while SQRP itself was not in play at that time, we know that it is associated with the harm our communities felt from our history in this district. This has naturally created lingering distrust around the issue of school accountability. But I believe that if we work together, we can move past this period in our history and we can create the system of accountability that we truly need. A system that fairly measures how students are progressing while at the same time lifting up our school communities. A system that is responsive to the diverse needs of not only students, but of the families and educators who are so critical to their development. This system also needs to help us answer some critically important questions. Questions like, are our students prepared for life after high school? Are they being set up for success as lifelong learners? And are we being transparent enough with our families and stakeholders about the quality of our schools across all neighborhoods? True accountability also requires that we look beyond what is happening inside each school building. From the classroom to the principal's office to central office and network office teams, educating Chicago's children is our collective responsibility because the school alone can't do it all. Our accountability system must measure how effective the district has been in supporting each school and the role that resourcing, funding, and teacher and principal stability have played in shaping school performance. If this is starting to sound like very complicated work, that's because it is. There are a lot of moving pieces. But I want to be clear. Breaking this process down and making it understandable for our families and the community is one of our most important goals. Because only when the process is transparent, clear, and totally accessible can we get the feedback that we need to make it better. That is the objective of these conversations. You are the people we are here to serve, which means that true success can only happen when we have your insight and your perspective. The activities that we have planned as a part of this town hall will help open up the lines of communication. And it'll give you an opportunity to share ideas on what school accountability in CPS can and should look like. So I want to thank each of you again for taking the time to spend with us this evening, to work with us. And I hope that you find today's experience to be as informative and rewarding as I know we will find it to be by having your voice and having you as a part of the conversation. So thank you for your time. And I look forward to what we can build together to improve school quality throughout Chicago Public Schools. And I will now turn things over to Maurice, the Dr. Maurice Sweeney, who will do a little bit of... Take it away, Doc.
Howdy. Can you hear me?
We're having a little bit...
Oh, my God.
...freaking out a little bit.
Okay, is that better? Can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay, good, good. Hello, everybody. I'm just going to keep my camera off. I'm having a little instability with my internet at the moment. But glad to be in this space with you all. I really appreciate the way everybody's really coming together in the city of Chicago around, you know, how do we improve our schools equitably? And how do we support our young people? I think what's critically important right now is how do we do all of this with an equity lens? And how do we use that equity lens to do this work? And that requires us to think about how do we champion the individual needs of our young people, the cultures of our city, in order to improve the outcomes and opportunities for everyone? So with that, we heard a lot yesterday around people wanting more time to talk, more time to socialize and to think, more time to share. And so we've shortened several parts of the conversation in order to do that, in order to give space for people to wrestle with larger ideas. So with that, I won't spend much time here except inclusive partnerships is important and that we are here to listen. And if we talk too much, stop us from talking so we can continue to listen to you. And I look forward to just hearing your thoughts and taking your thoughts to improve the quality of educational experiences in CPS. So I hope that you were able to hear me. I see Ms. O'Bannon gave me a thumbs up, so I must be okay. And looking to hand it over to an expert who, I must say, Monica is the bomb. She really helped to lift up and bring up things that we just need to talk about. We know race plays a role. We know understanding and differences play a role. And so I'm excited that she gets to facilitate this healing conversation for us. So with that, I will turn it over to Monica.
Thank you, Dr. Sweeney. Good evening, everybody. I'm Monica Haslip. I am a resident of the North Kimwood Community. I have been in Chicago for over 30 years. And my greatest and deepest passion is empowering the lives of children. So I've dedicated the last 27 years of my life just trying to make their lives better and prepare them to be able to thrive. So I am joining this conversation to help facilitate, but I'm also, you know, absolutely a part of this community. So I appreciate and thank you for allowing me to hold space for you. So, you know, in addition to my work at Little Black Pearl, over the past 12 years, you know, I've been moving around the country, training racial healing practitioners. I've also held circle in communities all over the country. And I've been doing some work around, you know, sort of holding space for really difficult conversations. So I've had the opportunity to spend time with, you know, the community in New Orleans around the 10th anniversary of Katrina, where people are still struggling and suffering as a result of that harm that was done. I have spent time in Flint, Michigan, around the water crisis. And also, you know, a conversation with, that even goes deeper around the issue of racism and systemic racism with the Georgetown University and the Society of Jesus and the descendants of the 272 enslaved people that Georgetown sold. And so, you know, I bring that up because I want to really sort of give context for our time together and also let you know that people around the country are dealing with some of the same issues that we're dealing with. So we're beginning this collective process and this collective visioning work together based on accountability redesign. Well, accountability, you know, is also about accountability with the community. You know, starting with the understanding that people come from different experiences and different perspectives. You know, we want to engage in this process, you know, that results in a culture change, a culture shift, where, you know, truth-telling and deep listening becomes, you know, the main element of our gatherings, even when we're working in partnership with large institutions like CPS. And we want this work to go beyond these town halls and focus groups. We really want it to be embedded in the new way that we interact with CPS in the community. This process, of course, you know, it's going to lift up some challenges. It's going to highlight issues and dynamics that often show that racism and bias still exist, as we know, in environments like CPS. And, you know, like Chief McDay mentioned, we know this. And it's an opportunity for us to really focus on what happens when we come together and understanding that we come together with all of us having bias. And this is an opportunity to recognize that and to know that we still have bias, even though we may have good intentions and good hearts. And when harm is done, you know, what I appreciate about what Chief McDay opened with is the acknowledgement of harm. You know, there's a need to acknowledge it and, you know, for us to do the work amongst ourselves and in ourselves, you know, to use the opportunity as, you know, a way for us to do better, for us to actually learn and do better. Yesterday, we had a town hall. You know, people really wanted to connect more and to share their truth more. And so today, we come back, changing this process to accommodate what we heard. And I think that that's the intention. That's how we hope to move forward with this work. And for us to be effective, you know, we need to be explicit about owning this process, you know, and owning the work that's being done, even though that work is being done in collaboration with CPS. So, you know, that is sort of the context. And, you know, one of the things that is really important to me is to eliminate hierarchy. The methodology of racial healing starts with the notion that we have to eliminate hierarchy in all, you know, places and possibilities. And so just in this few minutes, you know, CPS, you know, people, folk have the chance to introduce themselves. I've had a chance to introduce myself, but you haven't had a chance to introduce yourself. So that's really the beginning of a hierarchy. And we want to eliminate that. But what we know is we have a lot of people on the call. And there's no way we can go through the whole list and have everybody introduce themselves. But what we can do is start out together. You know, what I've been looking forward to this moment because this is the end of the day. We've all probably had a very full day. So I, through this collective introduction, I want to invite you all to first just, you know, breathe. Just take a moment and just breathe, you know. So I have an exercise that I do called rubbing hands. And if you all would join me, what I'd like to ask you to do is to just rub your hands together until you start to feel your hands get warm and you feel the energy in your hands start to get centered. And on the count of three, I'm going to ask you to take one hand and put on your heart. And your other hand, I want you to put on your stomach. So on the count of three, one, two, three. And I want you to just take five deep breaths. Five deep breaths in through your nose and out through your mouth. And if you feel comfortable, close your eyes. Make sure you're comfortable in your seat. Feel the air coming through your body. Feel your lungs filling up and expanding. You know, let the pressures of today, you know, of your day-to-day subside. Just let them roll off and relax, you know, and feel the gift of breath, just breathing, something we take for granted. And I want you to now take another deep breath. And let's just breathe for a moment for our children. Let's breathe for our parents and teachers who are at home, some of whom are struggling. Let's just give them a moment of rest. Let's just breathe for a minute. And let's breathe for each other. You know, let's breathe for each other as we share the space and time together this evening. And I want you to just take a breath, a deep breath of gratitude and appreciation. A deep breath of gratitude and appreciation. And now I want you to open your eyes, unmute your computers. And on the count of three, I want you to name an elder whose wisdom you think can guide us today. And on the count of three, I want everybody to speak that elder's name. Thank you, thank you. And in honor of the presence, the fact that you are at the end of your day, coming to this moment to help, you know, think and work on behalf of our children. On the count of three, I want you to say your name. And when you say your name, your name will anchor this space. So on the count of three, one, two, three. Beautiful. And finally, on behalf of our children, you know, on the count of three, I want you to speak the name of a child. Speak the name of a young person whose energy and spirit you want to bring into this space. And so on the count of three, one, two, three. Thank you, thank you. So that has us collectively grounding and eliminating the hierarchy of human value. We have all been introduced and we are all bringing our full selves to this space. So over the years, every single circle that I've been to, every single training that I've done, I've taken these touchstones with me. And the touchstones are sort of common agreements. They're ways that I invite people to think and to be as we do this work together. And so I'm just going to quickly go through them and just invite you to just think about them and recognize that hopefully these are the agreements that we can move forward with as we sort of hold space and share sacred stories. Because this is really what we're doing. We'll be sharing sacred stories with each other. So the first one is be 100% present, extending, and presuming welcome. Listen deeply, you know, listen intently to what's said. Listen, you know, for the feelings beneath the words. Always by invitation. You know, this is not about you, you know, no share. You don't share or die. You share because you choose to. Every, you know, each time we discover our own truth. So, you know, no fixing is really important. Suspend judgment, which is really one of the harder parts and the harder touchstones in this equation just because it's hard to set aside our judgments sometimes. Identify assumptions. Assumptions are usually invisible, but they undergird everything we believe in all of our worldviews. Speak your truth. Speak what's in your heart. You know, trusting that your truth is what's important. Respect silence. You know, silence is something we, it's a rare gift that we rarely, you know, use or acknowledge. Maintain confidentiality. In creating a safe space, it's important for people to feel that there's a confidential nature when they're sharing their stories. So even when you come back and we get into a big circle and we share stories on a large scale, make sure that you share your story. And if you want to reflect on something you heard in your triad, you know, honor that person by maintaining confidentiality and just speak about what resonated with you. And then finally, when things get difficult, turn to wonder. You know, there are a lot of times we don't agree. And if we don't agree, every now and then it's okay to just, you know, say, I wonder what brought her to this place? Or I wonder, you know, why my feelings are what they are or what my reactions are teaching me? So let's, you know, be open to turning to wonder. So these are touchstones that I take with me. I use as a tool to try to guide our time together. And I invite you to keep these touchstones in mind. So now we're just going to get right to it. Because yesterday, they, you know, made a clip that, you know, this is about honoring the opportunity for you to have voice and for you to be able to speak your truth. So we are going to get ready to go into our first breakout. And this breakout, there'll be three people in the breakout room. And this triad, you will each have two minutes each. And so a part of what I want you to do is I want you to really think about and be conscious of what it feels like to speak your truth for two minutes. You know, just think about that while you're sharing your truth. Think about what it takes for us to find the truth. And then the other two people that are in the triad, I'm going to ask you to just listen. You know, just listen deeply. Listen with the intention of feeling. And then you'll switch. And each person in that triad will answer the same question. So the question that we want you to answer is share a story about a time in your educational experience when you wanted to be seen, heard, or understood, and you were. What did this experience allow you to do, become, or how did it help improve the life of a child or others? So I want you to recognize in this question, you can go back to your own personal experience as a child. You can think of what is happening right now, what's relevant. But to answer the question, share a story about a time in your educational experience when you wanted to be seen, heard, understood, and you were. What did this experience allow you to do, become, or how did it help improve the life of children or others? So you have three people. We're going to send you off into the diads. You'll have six minutes together. Then we're going to bring you back and we'll open the floor up and invite you to share a high-level, one-minute sort of overview of what you shared in your triad. So thank you and you all enjoy your six minutes together. You know, find your truth and, you know, give the honor of listening.
So at this time, you're going to be able to raise your hands, click participation at the bottom of the screen. find your name and click the blue hand and click the blue hand again to lower your hand. So everybody know how to, everybody been doing Zooms. We, we've been doing this for a year now. So you know how to raise your hand. If you want to encourage anyone to use the chat, chat, feature, submit a video, voice message and use the idea board. So I'm asking all my, Earl, please use the idea board. I want to see a lot of comments from Earl on SQRP, the idea board, please. If not, you could just drop what your question or your answer are in the chat.
Thank you, thank you. So we have all these different ways that you can respond. I'm going to ask you, you know, the, the goal here is to get as many people an opportunity to, to speak as possible. We have about 10 minutes. I'm going to ask you to, if you can hold your comments to at least a minute, that would be helpful. So before we sort of open it up, what we'd like you to do is to share some of the high level, you know, aspects of your conversation with your triad. So we can begin to see where we have connections or things resonate. So that's what we're going to do next. But before we get into that, I want to ask a couple of quick questions. If any one person can tell me what it felt like to speak your truth. You know, what did it feel like to speak your truth for two minutes without interruption and knowing that you were being heard? Somebody in the chat said empowering. Anybody else?
Oh yeah, don't be shy, fill that chat up. Don't let me down like that. Come on now.
Somebody said powerful. So, you know, that's the point, to really sort of help us find our truth and to recognize that this is the opportunity for us to speak that truth. And so what did it feel like to be the listener? Because now we also have invited you to just see, you know, be the listener. Hope be the container for somebody else's story. Anybody can tell me what it felt like to be the listener? Somebody said enlightening and connected. So yes, so these are the feelings. So we want you to move beyond the headspace and get into the heart space. And that's where our relationships deepen and that's how we get to move things. That's how things are transformed and changed as a result of that sort of collective effort. So I'm going to now open it up. This is your floor. I'm going to open it up for anybody who's interested in sharing the story that you shared with your, in your triad. Or actually, if you have any comments about the things you may have heard in your, in your triad. And so I'm going to ask Hal, Hal is going to help me out with calling on you to make sure that we get as many people as we can.
Come on, parents, speak up. This our time, this our hour. Come on, parents, speak up.
I see we've got Tiffany Price.
All right, Tiffany.
Hello, good evening, everyone. So I was in a group with Consuelo and Ms. Bennett. And I, as both a parent of young children and as a teacher, I found it very interesting that there was this common story of childhoods of lots of transition and trauma. And yet our focus as kids was to please our teachers and to want to be valued by our teachers and not really being known by those teachers. So finding our value in getting good grades and wondering if we would have, could have been known in any other way, other than like letter grades and achievement. So that our focus was really knowing our teachers and our teachers not knowing us. So that we were going through all this transition and yet they weren't aware of it.
Thank you, Tiffany. Who we got next, Hal?
I don't think everyone has heard Ms. O'Bannon imploring everyone to, to not be shy.
Don't be shy. I know I got some parents on here. Come on, say something. I know you want your.
Yesterday, we really, you know, got the feedback that folk felt like they didn't have enough time.
I'll go through here and find me some parents and start calling some names. I better go ahead and speak up.
I've got one, Maxica.
Hello, everyone. I am Maxica Williams. And I learned that as a child and, and with Kristen, we grew up similarly. We were children, we were seen and not heard. So when that question was asked upon us, it gave us the opportunity to be relieved. We grew up in parent and households whereby we were siblings. And we were judged based off of what our siblings' performance was before us. So we were not heard by teachers. And I was one of those type of students and children because I'm Aries in a ram. I wasn't going to live in the outside, in shadow of my siblings. So I excelled them. I got doubles and I ended up graduating high school when I was 16. So I was like, stop comparing me to my siblings because I'm Maxica Williams, the one, the only. So don't, don't say that I'm not like Wendy, Joey, or any of my other siblings. And it wasn't until that moment that teachers understood who I was and why I, my drive was the way it was. But you all gave me the opportunity to relieve and get some of that off of my chest. And I know a lot of students are going through that right now.
Yeah, the story I shared yesterday was, it totally resonates. That's my experience too. I totally feel that.
Hal, do we have a student on here that can, want to say something?
I don't know offhand who's a student, but I know that we have Mr. James Harmon has his hand raised.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. How you doing? Okay. Well, I got in and I was able to talk to a young lady about her experience. And her experience was one of not being relatable or being able to adjust to new schools and new surroundings. She was telling me, you know, how her situation was. She was the first person to go to college. And so I, I can understand there'll probably be a lot of pressure or responsibility on her, you know, in general. So that was what we came across together as a group. And I had one particular comment about, you know, the SQRP itself. Okay, it's about, about how to use data to inform school communities. So if you're trying to get, you know, get actual information out to people, I was wondering, okay, we're dealing with the pandemic. But what, what everybody is focused on here is groups was dealing with our young kids. Everybody's worrying about their kids. If you're a teacher or if you're a parent and you have students who are still in the class. So the, the things are about data, it's certain things that they would know. You want to know, you know, how safe is my child in school? So certain things you might want to know is like infection fatality rates for kids. Actually, through that age group, school age kids, ages five through roughly high school age, five to 18, 19. That's what we're worried about kindergarten through high school. The survival rate is 99.998%. Infection fatality rate, 0.002%. So when we look at those sort of things, we have a lot of fear because there is a lot going on and there are a lot of people who are at risk. But actually, kids are the, probably the most safest group, all things considered. In the state of Illinois, since the beginning of the school year, well, since the beginning of the pandemic, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, there have been 13 children that have lost their lives due to COVID. So that's over a year. We've been a year into the pandemic. And so these are things that parents and for anyone who has lost a child, I do not want to diminish that at, at any point do I want to make this, make light of that. But we have to understand that kids in general are not at serious risk of COVID. And if CPS is not going to give the actual data to the parents so they can know what's going on, I don't know what the point is for, for this, you know, group.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. I, I apologize. I, I have to be the person in this equation who keeps us on track in terms of time, just so we can honor everybody. So I, I absolutely appreciate your comments. And we, you know, always know that, you know, anytime children are, we lose children, that's, that's the greatest loss we could ever have. So thank you so much for your comments. And we're gonna, we're gonna actually move to the next level. So a part of this, this experience of the racial healing circle really is about deepening our relationships. Because it sits inside of a bigger framework. You know, it, it's, it's the belief that if we deepen our relationships, those of us that sit in a seat of power, we will make a different decision when we actually know people from a different perspective. So, you know, we now want to move into the next level of our time together where you're going to do the same thing you did before, but you're going to have more time. And so we try to get to a deeper question, a question that's absolutely connected to why we're here. So this time you're going to have three people. It'll be the same. I'm going to invite you again to, to, you know, move in the same spirit where you tell your truth and you actually listen deeply to the folk that are with you. So you'll have 10, 10 minutes this time. And we will, you know, send you a little, I put the question in the chat for those of you who need it. And the question is, what is important for the district to know about your personal experience in CPS going into the accountability redesign process? What is important for the district to know about your personal experience, excuse me, in CPS going into the accountability redesign process? And the second part of that question is, how can the district rebuild and continue to grow trust? How can the district rebuild and continue to grow trust? I think we're going to give you 10 minutes and then we're going to bring you back and we're going to debrief again. And we'll get as many responses as possible during this second question. Because this is the meaty part of this discussion. So we're going to send you off. Enjoy one another and we'll see you back in about 10 minutes. I hope you had as good a time as I did in my, in my breakout room. Ms. Dyer, thank you. That was awesome. So I am now going to just open this up. You know, I'm going to invite you all to share some of the information and stories that you share with each other in your triads. Please, you know, honor the one minute if you can because it just gives us more space for it to get as many people as possible heard. And, you know, just look for ways that things connect. You know, things that you're hearing, how do they connect to you? Things that you're hearing, do they resonate with you? Is this your experience too? And those are things that we want to sort of begin to pay attention to. So I want to open it up, Hal. Feel free to call on our first person to share their story.
We have Bridgette White.
Hi, the first thing that I had mentioned was about parent involvement. CPS stresses a lot of times about wanting parent involvement at the school. And I feel like it's more about stating it as opposed to actually doing it. Because if they were doing it, it would be mandatory across the board as far as what the schools are doing and not at certain schools and not at selective enrollment schools. So that's one piece. The other piece we just talked about, which was really important, is writing. We need to put writing back in the schools across the board as well, not at certain schools. Because as students get into high school and have to start applying for essays for college, that's going to be key for them to be able to do so. And if they don't have everyday writing and just doing only computer skills or clicking on buttons on the computer, they're not going to be effective. And the last piece we also talked about was critical thinking. If you teach children to be more critical thinkers, they can be successful across the board in anything, not just reading and math. We put too much reading emphasis on the NWEA testing on reading and math as opposed to the support to be successful in reading and math. And I'm just going to leave it right there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Hal.
You've got some folks that are shy to raise their hands. You can use the, the raise your hand function by clicking on your name.
And did anybody hear anything?
I've got a Kristen Brody.
Okay.
Hi, thanks so much. I just wanted to share a little bit about my school because our experience has been, has been kind of the opposite of what it should be, I think. In that we have had, we were a one-plus school for quite a while, but we had a period of time where we couldn't get a, a math teacher for our middle, middle school and our, and our scores suffered. It's been difficult to get math teachers in general. And we are predominantly, a school that's predominantly low income, predominantly students of color, about 45% English language learners. And we have a hard time attracting some staff. And so as a result, our SQRP went down. And we're also in a neighborhood that's gentrifying where we're vying for students. And so losing that one plus meant we also lost enrollment, which means that we also had to eventually cut some, some positions, which means we're, we just continue at the, so it's the ball rolling downhill. And we're a great STEM school. That's a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood school that just is caught in how these numbers are done. And so as we look at how we can do them better, I feel like our school is exactly an example of like, don't, don't, you know, don't let us go down over here. We really, like every neighborhood school, we're, we're worth saving and investing in and not getting caught up in the numbers and then losing enrollment and losing money and then losing further enrollment and losing further money. I think we're, we're one of many. So just was grateful to share that and was grateful to be able to share that with a board member. So thank you and thank you for, for, for sharing that as well.
Thank you, Kristen.
I know folks can use the chat as well, but please, we encourage you to raise your hand, share your thoughts from your breakout room.
And from the two people that we just heard from, does anything that has been said resonate with anybody else? You know, is that, does that remind you of anything that you're experiencing or any connections?
I see Ms. White has her hand raised again.
Yes, I wanted to piggyback off Ms. Brody's comment when she spoke about math because another thing that isn't consistent with the schools is having algebra in elementary school. If the students, with STEM being as important as it is of a future career, if the students aren't having algebra in at least seventh or eighth grade, they're going to already be behind the curve by getting algebra in ninth grade and high school. Because the emphasis with engineering and things of that nature with STEM, the students should be having that type of class, algebra in elementary school. So that's another key focus. I would want to know about a school is, do you have algebra at your elementary school? Or my, I don't want my student at your school. Because if my child is focused on being in STEM, I want to make sure that all children have that type of access across the board too with CPS.
Thank you. Make sure you're putting any information or your information as well in the chat along the way. All right, Hal, I didn't hear you.
We've got Laverne Wright.
Laverne?
Hi, good evening. I just want to say, I mean, it resonated with me, some things that you said earlier, right? About that hierarchy that has to dissipate. And so I know that accountability is imperative and we have to have a matrix that we are evaluated and held to those standards. But I feel like the trust is going to be built as we really think about the individual supports that schools need. So how can we elevate all of our schools across the district to become level one-plus schools? Every school is uniquely different. And so allowing chiefs. And so, allowing chiefs as deputies, as network offices are able to provide those supports, those resources that these individual schools need so that we're not competing against each other, so that we're not, that things are true and not just a reflection of administrators chasing a ghost that does not exist. And so, that we are really, truly being evaluated by the work that we're doing, but getting the supports and resources that we, our students deserve.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, any, uh, anybody got any thoughts based on what Ms. Wright just said around the trust-building part? You know, the trust-building part of that question? Any sort of reactions from your time together that you shared in your triads that would be something that you want to share in the bigger group that you feel might resonate with, with, you know, many other people? How, how do you think CPS should be building trust? You know, how can they rebuild trust? What are some of the things they need to do?
Everyone can share in the chat and we've got the idea boards links as well. Um, but we also have, uh, Mexica has been waiting for a little bit.
Um, yes, I believe that CPS can build trust through these particular town halls and you all taking this information and actually using it. We wanna see this information written down in the plan for the new SQRP program. We've built, believe that building trust is listening to the CPS students, listening to the CPS parents, the CPS staff and any other stakeholders for the Chicago Public School Systems. Making sure that, um, there is accountability when our information is not taken seriously. And making sure that there are new metrics set in place for the grading for all of the schools system based on what the parents and all those, and the children and the stakeholders say. Just taking what we say face value and not leading us on to come to these town halls and not be heard. Um, and, you know, making sure that the curriculum for all of the students is the same across the border from the north side to the south side to the west side. Um, and making sure that you put cursive writing back in schools because these children are not learning cursive writing, their algebra or geometry until they get to high school and it's putting them further behind. However, their schools up on the north side, because my children have went to both, north, south, and west side. And there was a difference. My children were like two or three years ahead of the other students. So, there should be, not be any learning curve where children are that far behind. Everybody should be learning at the same pace and there should be as much financial investment in the south and the west side schools as it is on the north side. So that we can hire quality, um, teachers to teach our students. Teachers with master's degrees. Um, a lot of those teachers that we used to have that were really good, they left the Chicago Public School System to go to charter schools, magnet schools, and private schools because of the money issue. We need to reinvest some of that money back into our other schools on the west and south side in the lower-income communities. For us to have, um, these children, because our children are our futures. They're our future presidents, our future aldermen, our future state legislatures, that and such. Just building that trust and listening to us and incorporating what we're saying back into there.
Thank you, Mexica. You know, I, I think that, uh, that the point you raised about owning the process, you know, that's sort of why, why I mentioned that in the beginning. It's really important for us as a community to own this, this process in partnership with the CPS. You know, because that's how we get your stories and your information. That's how it informs the outcome. You know, that we stay engaged in the process through the process and hold each other accountable, including CPS. Anybody else?
We've got Letitia.
Hi, thank you. So, I think that in order for CPS to build trust, I think it's very important that CPS creates a process that's continuous, that's not just the one and done. Like, oh, okay, we're just gonna measure test scores this one, this one time and it'll tell us everything we need to know about the child. It doesn't tell us about the environment that the child is in, the opportunities that that child has at school, the after-school programs, the supports it has, the SCL, like how many caseworkers do they have? Do they have a nurse? Is everybody, is every student having their, their needs met? Because in the end, what is the purpose of education, right? Like, why do kids go to school? What is the purpose of that? They don't go to school to learn how to take a test, how to write A, B, C, D. Uh, and that's it. They go to, you know, um, able to build, you know, their foundation for their life. So, I think it's, it's about thinking of evaluation as something that transcends uh, one test score, something that is long-term.
Thank you.
We have Kitty Gruber.
Um, hi, everybody. I'd like to follow up on a comment from Ms. Wright and when she said that when we have schools that are competing against each other for students, that that, because this is a choice district, like, I feel like we can't ride the horse forward and backward at the same time. Like, we can't both truly support every neighborhood school and, you know, build this trust and grow each individual school and at the same time, try to maintain this choice district where it's actually built on setting up, oh, what's the best choice for your student? So, I feel like we're actually fundamentally opposed to each other, like these two different principles. And I would like to see the district move in the direction of supporting every school rather than pitting schools against each other in competition for students. And because the dollars follow the student, that's what it, it ends up being.
Yes. Thank you, Katie.
Uh, we have Dustin Voss.
Yeah, my, I, uh, I'm Dustin Voss. I'm central office now, but I speak strongly from my perspective as a teacher at Fanger. And Louz, a student was in my group and Tanya, a principal is in my group. And Louz mentioned this deference to numbers and how sometimes when, when you're speaking up the hierarchy, uh, your words can be listened to but not really heard because there's always a number that the hierarchy is after. And that really resonated with me and with my other group members. So, I just wanted to share that from Louz.
Thank you. I think we have time for a couple of more uh, before I pass this off to Jeff.
I would like to talk a little bit about kindergarten because that's where it all starts. And we send students at five years old to kindergarten and not everyone is ready for that. And I'm noticing more and more schools, especially private schools, have two kindergartens. And from volunteering and working with students in kindergarten and first grade, some students come ready for the rigors of kindergarten. And we've moved our first-grade curriculum to kindergarten. And sometimes students have the cognitive ability, but socially and emotionally, they're not ready. And so, if we had two kindergartens, we could move the students along the path. Uh, I see students, they, they are not ready for the concentration. They aren't ready for the self-regulation, the rigidity, the regimentation of being in kindergarten and first grade and doing that work every day. Some students still need a play-based kindergarten. Some students are ready for the rigors. And there needs to be a way that when we, when students leave preschool and they go to kindergarten and first grade, we can see, are they really ready for this? Because I've seen so many students, they aren't reading because they aren't ready. Their brains aren't developed to that point yet. Doesn't mean that they won't be, um, ready. And then we need to, with that dibbles, um, can we identify and what do we do with students who are struggling uh, to read in kindergarten and first grade? I know I've read in Finland, students don't start school until they're seven. And I, I know we're not gonna do that here in America. But it just seems that kindergarten, first grade, it's, it's where they start. And we wait for them to fail in third grade. Well, we see they aren't reading, they aren't doing math, they aren't doing. Instead of having a continuum and saying, when students start, all right, where are they on this continuum and how do we get them there? Instead of saying, okay, third grade now, everybody should be able to pass the test. There need, there just needs to be a little bit more input into that.
Thank you, Lorraine. We have one more that, uh, let's, let's invite our final person to give us wisdom for the night before I transition this off to Jeff. Hal, I think we have one more person.
Oh, and every school, oh, go ahead. Every school needs music, art, and physical education.
Yay.
Every school, every child, all the private schools have that every day. They have that every day. And our kids get it, maybe sixty minutes once a week.
I am totally one hundred percent in agreement. Thank you, Lorraine.
Everybody has their hand raised, but if someone wants to raise your hand, you can have the, the final comment before we start the transition.
Hi, my name is Ron Milner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Okay. I have a quick question for everybody here. Raise your hand. How many people have a refrigerator in their home? How many people have a stove in their home? How many people have a stock market portfolio that outperforms seventy percent of professional money managers? That's the problem right there. We are living in the richest country in the history of the world and yet, we have a substantial amount of poor people. And the reason we have a substantial amount of poor people is because no one teaches financial education. I am born and raised in Chicago. I went to Dunbar Vocational High School and it wasn't until I turned forty years old that I realized I never got that education. And I had to force myself to learn it. And once I did, my whole life changed. So, I will call upon CPS to do a couple of things, but mainly focus on financial education because there's no reason to have poor people in this country. I grew up in poverty. I know what it's like. And now, I know what it's like not to be in poverty. So, if you can change that dynamic, you can change the lives of people and it's not that hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And thank all of you. Thank you for giving me the honor of holding space for you today. And it, it has really absolutely been a pleasure. And I would invite you as a closing, as we close out this part of our time together, to just put, drop in the chat, you know, one word uh, that describes what you're feeling right now. You know, what are you feeling right now after having this opportunity to speak your truth? I think we, we look forward to many, many, many more opportunities to do this. But drop one word in there for me and I thank you. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff. I, I see enlightened, uh, just to highlight hopeful, grateful. And that, and that would be my word too, grateful. Thank you all. Jeff?
Excellent. Thank you, Monica. Uh, really appreciate that intro, appreciate the space, appreciate the spirit of engagement that folks are coming in the room with. Uh, really, just, I'm also grateful for, um, just everyone being here today. I mean, it's, it's, it's late and there's still a lot of energy and folks on. So, so thank you to everyone. Um, so, just to give a little info. My name is Jeff Brum. I'm Director of School Quality Measurement Research, which is a long-winded title for, uh, you know, we do some, uh, different performance evaluations in the district, including, uh, school ratings. Uh, so, I'm gonna try to do some brief remarks before we get into our final discussion. And my goal with my time is to make sure that everyone leaves here today understanding why we're doing this process, what the district's goals are, uh, how our stakeholder engagement plan is rooted in the district's equity framework, which you see on your screen. And then, I wanna make sure everybody has a sense of the timeline for the project. We're gonna close the day with a breakout session to discuss two things. So, as I, as I continue with my comments, uh, please hold these two questions in mind. Whose voice might be missing in the stakeholder engagement process? And what are the ways the district can inform, communicate, and keep folks engaged throughout the process? So, we have some thoughts on that, but we know we don't have all the answers and we need your help to make this process as effective as it can be. So, let's start, why are we doing this? Uh, we wanna ground this conversation with a commitment uh, that we're always gonna measure student and school performance. We think that's a really important exercise in transparency and empowerment for our stakeholders. Um, that being said, uh, you know, as Chief McDade said, we're, we're proud of the current system of SQRP and we've also heard that it can be improved. So, in response to that feedback, uh, we need your help. We wanna partner with you to co-create a new system that does a better job of serving our school communities and the district. So, we've got a few goals. The first is to collaborate with you and all of our education stakeholders in the city to create a new accountability system that promotes equity and excellence in our schools. Uh, but we wanna flag that this is, we don't need to be constrained by how school ratings have operated, uh, in the past, either in Chicago or nationwide. This, this conversation goes beyond that. At the end of this initiative, we want a system, uh, that does a few things. One, we wanna make sure our stakeholders have a better, more complete picture of how our schools are performing. We want the new system to do a better job of aligning with and informing how the district supports schools, including, uh, school budgeting. Uh, but we know that supports go beyond budgeting. There are also a lot of non-financial supports that we want to do a better job of providing. We want, um, to make sure, uh, that there's new information on, on school quality. But we also wanna make sure it's more accessible, uh, to all of our stakeholders. We, it doesn't, uh, we don't do these reports for fun. If you all can't use them, then there's no point. So, we wanna make sure, uh, that you're empowered with the information that we have about our schools and we need your help figuring out how to make that accessible. Uh, and then, finally, and this is probably the biggest departure from, uh, previous conversations, you know, how our, how our schools perform and how our students perform is not all about, uh, what happens in the school. We also know that the schools are part of a larger system, that the district needs to be accountable for the supports that schools provide or that schools receive. Uh, and so, we want to have a conversation about how the new system can measure district effectiveness. So, we can talk about district and system accountability, not just school accountability. So, as Dr. Swinney mentioned earlier, our stakeholder engagement process connects to the equity framework. Uh, and we're gonna come back to that as our touchstone throughout. But as I said, we need your feedback to make sure this process works. So, right now, we're just listening. Uh, and we're gonna stay in a listening stance at the process, but we're gonna go throughout this, these different phases. Uh, and, and after we sort of can get this baseline of listening, we're gonna move to the informed phase. And what we wanna be able to do is provide stakeholders with, uh, good information to ensure that we all have a shared baseline understanding of what we're trying to do, what the process is gonna be, and how hard this conversation is really is, is that we're undertaking, what the challenge is. Uh, because again, we're all in this together and we're all gonna have to struggle through a lot of the tensions that are already surfacing uh, to get to some, uh, something better. So, we've got some ideas about how we can provide you this information. Uh, but that's one of the questions, remember, that we're gonna talk about in our breakup session, uh, breakout session. We're then gonna go into consultation. This is where we're gonna get stakeholder feedback, uh, through meetings, focus groups. We're kinda gonna get more granular, uh, with respect to what we're gonna talk about. We wanna make sure that really the, the folks that we're prioritizing here include parents and caregivers, uh, including parents and caregivers of diverse learners, English learners, other priority groups. We wanna hear from students. We wanna hear from principals and teachers, both elementary and high school. We wanna talk to LSCs, parent advisory councils, community action councils. And, and then frankly, anybody with an interest uh, in our kids' education, especially if you're active in the school community, we need to hear from you too. And this group that's here today, we appreciate you. We also need your help getting these other stakeholders involved in the process. So, we're gonna really do everything we can to provide a lot of opportunities for all of these stakeholder groups to contribute their perspectives during this phase. But we wanna make sure that this is the right one. Uh, this is the right list of, of stakeholders. And so, we're also gonna be talking about that. Who are we missing? Who else do, do you think we need to make sure we, uh, involve in this conversation? Uh, then we're gonna go to, uh, the involve phase where we're going to, Uh then we're gonna go to uh the involve phase where we're going to uh start getting into more concrete ideas. So everything we've heard to that date, we're gonna translate into specific proposals, possible solutions and get your feedback on it. And and this is where we start to get into that co-creation space where we've heard what's important. We go back and say, hey, we think we could do it this way. What do you think? Uh and so that's where we start to really formulate the policy together. And then, and then we move into collaboration where we have our advisory group uh that's throughout the process is gonna help us translate your feedback into policy. But also, we're gonna have lots of other large and small group discussions. We're gonna continue to present different solutions and alternatives. Again, all tied back to everything we've heard to date. Uh and then we're gonna, for us, uh one aspect of our accountability, I heard this in the comments, Is that our success will be measured by the extent to which the final policy is reflected In uh what you say, reflects uh what we've heard to date. Okay, so that's gonna be our measure of success. Uh we're also gonna talk about uh other district policies that are impacted by this, like how schools are funded Because all of these things intersect each other. Uh and so we're gonna be talking about that throughout the process too. Uh the the ultimate goal i- is a a approval by uh the Board of Education. Um but again, as I mentioned, a- and that'll be a a a public vote. Uh but again, the goal is that when you see the policy, you're not surprised by it. There's not gonna be uh any gotchas before the the board vote. And again, it's gonna reflect uh what we've said throughout. And so it's the idea that uh People can say, oh, I see this in the policy. I remember saying that. I remember someone else saying that and I feel heard And I feel that my input was reflected in the final policy. And you know, when we talk about accountability, we also want accountability for the district through this process. And so the way we're gonna do that is to be as transparent as possible so that you can hold us accountable for how how we progress. And so at the end, each phase, we're gonna release an interim report uh synthesizing everything that we've heard. Uh we'll make it um available publicly. We'll present it to different stakeholder groups and then we'll we'll iterate. That'll be your chance to say, oh, you missed this. You got that a little wrong. Great job hearing that. And we're gonna do that throughout. So this slide kind of summarizes uh the the timeline for all of this. Again, uh we're gonna go to a board vote. Our goal is for April uh twenty twenty-two. Uh so we've got about a year uh to engage in this really important project. Um and and as we sort of launch this next phase, uh I want to just call out That the district is really trying to approach this and enter the space in a spirit of uh humility. Uh we're here to learn. Uh we're not here to lecture. Um and we're not asking for trust. We know we need to earn that and we've already talked about uh trust uh tonight. But we we do hope we can ask for grace uh because we're gonna make mistakes along the way. Uh and and we hope for that you can extend us that grace and give us feedback on how to do better Because that's really our goal. We want this process to work for you. So I I'm gonna, I hope that all made sense. I hope that's helpful context and I'm gonna uh end my comments and we're now gonna go into breakout rooms Uh to discuss two questions. One, again, just as a reminder, uh tell us who's missing in the stakeholder engagement process. We've mentioned Families, students, teachers, principals, uh LSC members, other community groups, but who else? Is there anyone we haven't thought of? The second question is what uh how can we inform, communicate and keep you engaged throughout the process? We've mentioned some of the ideas that we have, webinars, town halls like this, showing up to meetings, focus groups, et cetera. But what else should we be thinking about? So um with that, we're gonna go into our breakout sessions. Each breakout room will have a facilitator. Uh we're not gonna do a a debrief, but you uh your facilitator will take really detailed notes. Okay, so please uh make sure you you express uh your answers to those questions. And then if you don't get time or if you don't feel your word that it got captured uh in exactly the right way, again, I'm gonna do a final plug from that chat. Uh that's being recorded and then uh we can uh we would love to hear your messages Uh written, spoken, videos uh sent to sqrp@cps.edu. SQRP@cps.edu is the email inbox where we're doing this. Uh so thank you, everyone, for your time. Really looking forward to the small uh small group sessions.
Hi, Mrs. Dyer, do you wanna, do you wanna um?
Yes, yes, I am ready. So welcome back, everyone. Um and thank you, everyone, for sharing your experiences and your insights. So good evening. My name is Denise Dyer and I live in the Inglewood community. And I have three CPS students. One attends Nicholson STEM in Inglewood and two are students at Simeon High School. In addition to being a parent and representing my children and all children in my community, I am also here today representing the Inglewood, Inglewood Community Action Council And the Kids First Chicago Parent Advisory Board and hundreds of parents from multiple communities all across the city. I've been supporting schools on the south side for more than ten years. I would like to partner with the district to make sure that parents are better informed about new Policies and changes that are going to impact their children and schools. Sometimes I feel like we get information late and because of that, we don't have enough time to provide A well-thought-out response to what CPS is proposing. I'm hoping that this process will be different. Parent voices matter and we want to be engaged, not just as advisors, but also as co-creators and decision makers. Are there any other parents or other stakeholders who would like to share before we close out? Missile Banner uh gave multiple ways to share, so if you would like to share a comment or video, there are links in the chat to make sharing easier. This conversation is definitely important to me, my family and my community. A conversation about accountability is really a conversation about the purpose of schools and the vision we have as parents for our children. What we decide to measure is what we believe to be most important. This will inform the district on how our children should be taught As well as the resources and supports they need. That is why this conversation is so very important. Before you leave, we are asking everyone to complete an exit survey. The link is in the chat. And we will also send the survey to the email you registered with.
Oh.
Sorry. Finally, please tell a friend, another parent, a student, an educator or community member about these town halls, about these town halls. Please note, the CPS has added a fifth town hall specifically for Spanish-speaking stakeholders. We want to make sure every voice is heard. Thank you, everyone, and have a great rest of your day.
Yay for March the sixteenth, yay.
Powerful group of stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening.